Hello and welcome to the beautiful Bailey Center Auditorium on the grounds of Wallace State College in Hansville. Thank you to our gracious host, Wallace State College and Dr. Vicki Karlowix. The 2025 Debate Series in question and answer form continues today with the municipal elections, more specifically Coleman City Council. These events are designed to give the public more unfiltered answers without the questions ahead of time, direct comparisons and meaningful conversation. Today, we continue with Coleman City Council Place Three. Now we shift our focus to the candidates running for Place Three. Both Johnny Cook and Jason Willoughby are present today to answer questions. We worked diligently to reach every candidate and we were very happy that you both are able to attend today. With all that being said, let's get to the rules for the candidates. No electronic devices permitted, so if you have a smartwatch on, on stage, please turn it off. Questions will alternate, so no candidate answers first or last more than the other. Your opening statement is limited to 60 seconds and may be a prepared statement. Time allotted per question will be two minutes. A closing statement is limited to 90 seconds and must be spoken without notes. One rebuttal per question, but only if a candidate calls out the other and then it is set for a 45-second rebuttal. Facts only, no accusations without proof. This will only allocate additional time to your opponents. Voters deserve substance over slogans, so let's begin. Mr. Cook, if you would, your opening statement. You have 60 seconds, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm Johnny Cook and I want to thank Wallace College and Noah here for having us today. I'm City Council Place Three. My wife, Dawn, and I have been married 42 years. We have three children who all reside in Coleman and they're raising our grandchildren here. That's a very proud accomplishment that I'm very proud of because we've created a place that is safe and secure to raise families. Proud of the other accomplishments that we've done in this city to bring industry, jobs, and accommodations for all ages and abilities. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your opening statement. And Mr. Willoughby, if you would like to give your opening statement, sir?
I'm Jason Willoughby. I'm running for City Council, Place Three. I'm a sixth-generation Coleman resident. My third great-grandfather, Joseph, migrated to Coal Springs from Billerica, Georgia in the 1800s, homesteaded a tract of 120 acres. And I'm a Christian. I'm a father. I'm a husband. And I'm the candidate running on term limits and a common sense approach to growth.
Thank you, sir, for your opening statements. And we shall begin with the questions, starting with you first. Johnny, we're going to go by first names during this. All right. So Johnny, you'll go first. And this is on experience. What past experiences best prepare you to serve on the council? And what weaknesses do you have that voters should consider?
Wow, experiences. Well, I've had a good tenure here. And so earlier you talked about adversities. I faced a tornado. I helped shape the alcohol ordinance to make both sides happy when the citizens voted go wet. We went through the hailstorm, COVID. And when I first came on, nobody else has experienced an economic downturn that we worked through and every employee kept their job and they kept working 40 hours a week. That would be the experience level. The weakness would be probably wanting to spend time with your family and them having to suffer you not being there.
Thank you, sir, for your response. And Jason, same question on experience. What past experiences best prepare you to serve on the council? And what weaknesses do you have that voters should consider?
Well, one thing's for certain, I don't have 17 years of experience on city council. But I do have 25 years of experience in private business where we have 17 coworkers. We also went through the downturn in '08, the tragedy really in '08, '09. At the time, we only had three employees and it was me and my father and another gentleman. So me and my father didn't get paid for about 18 months, but we also didn't lose an employee. And he just celebrated his 20th year with us just a couple of months ago. Tornado. I live four blocks behind East Tellerian School. We got hit. We had the roof lifted off of our house. We evacuated the kids and my wife and we prayed and we dealt with the mayor, Max Townsend, and he was fantastic. So we watched it get put back together, didn't know if we wanted to stay, it was so horrible. It took years. But we're back and we love it and we didn't move from our home, we fixed it. And I don't have any downturns that I know of that someone shouldn't vote for me.
Thank you, sir, for your response. And we will stay with you for this next question regarding growth pressure. Coleman is one of the fastest-growing cities in Alabama. What is one specific policy you would propose to make sure growth benefits long-term residents as much as the new arrivals?
This for me?
Yes.
Well, as far as the long term for existing citizens, we've got a growth going on that we're not going to be able to slow it as much as some of us would like to. I'm proud that people are wanting to move to our community and live in our community. But we can grow a different way. I have visited this week some of these POD neighborhoods that our zoning laws were changed in September of 2019 to allow some of these outside developers to come in and pretty much do as they please. They leave us with drainage problems. We're backing these neighborhoods right up to the existing citizens on these 56-year-old neighborhoods. And I think we can do a better job with that type of growth. Like I said, they have put a moratorium on that. They left it in place for two and a half years. The pathway is there. There's about 500 houses that will be built, even though some stuff has been changed around. They've already approved it. So I think we need to do a better job with taking care of the existing citizens prior to the migrating citizens that are coming here.
Thank you, sir, for your response. And Johnny, same question, growth pressure. Coleman is one of the fastest-growing cities in Alabama. What is one specific policy you would propose to make sure growth benefits longtime residents as much as the new arrivals?
Well, as was mentioned, in 2019, a lot of developers came and one of the reasons they came was because people wanted the jobs. We brought higher-paying jobs in and with that, it's a domino effect. You've got to have places for them to live, places for them to eat, places for them to go to school. We addressed that issue and we have since changed that. Now, the planned subdivisions were all engineered with the highest engineering standards there are. And so with that, as far as drainage problems, they're engineered to where there can be no more runoff than was before when the subdivision was built. And we gauged that and it's true to fact.
Can I respond to that? 30 seconds to respond.
I've worked this last week on the Bolte Road area by the Bolte Crossing. At the corner of Hart Drive and Bolte Road, these poor citizens showed me videos of rivers of mud crossing the Bolte Road, going down Hart Drive and flooding them out. I witnessed a crew come out after videos were posted on Facebook and clean out about a three-foot-wide ditch, thinking this is going to take care of the problem. This to the highest point of engineering, as my opponent is saying.
Johnny, 30 seconds to respond.
The event he's talking about is a non-precedent at rain that only happens every so often. You can't control every construction site 24/7 and the good Lord puts that kind of rain on you. They were out there and they cleaned it up and will continue to keep it cleaned up.
Thank you, sir. Now, Johnny, we'll stay with you. This regards infrastructure challenges. Coleman's rapid growth strains utilities and roads. What's your specific plan to fund improvements without overburdening taxpayers?
Well, that's a good question. And I would continue to do what I'm doing right now to not overburden people because they're already taxed. That money goes to Washington DC and it goes to Montgomery. And as we did on 157, we worked several years and we ended up getting $14 million to get that done. We ended up getting $2.3 million to get the Larkwood Bridge and the Eva Road Bridge done. We have been appropriated $33 million for 278 and we got to continue to work to get it brought down. And that's my job, is to bring your tax dollars back to Coleman, Alabama.
Thank you, sir, for your response. Jason, same question on infrastructure challenges. Coleman's rapid growth strains utilities and roads. What's your specific plan to fund improvements without overburdening taxpayers?
Well, for one thing, I stated the other night, I don't think that solving our infrastructure problems is shrinking our streets from 100-foot rideaways to, I measured the 104, it's going to be 23 feet. I don't think two delivery trucks are going to be able to pass there. So I think that's going to, we're adding to our traffic woes by creating these dangerous parking places is basically what we're getting out of it. As far as the 157, fantastic, we finally completed it. I used to dive off that bridge on Lake Otomo when I was in high school. I mean, it's taken a long time to get that taken care of. But here's my problem with that. So we've approved a 250-home neighborhood on Noble Ridge that's going to dump out onto 157 or they'll run it through the neighborhood above there that's been there 75 years. They'll run all that traffic out. So we also have another development that's been approved. I think they're calling it the warranty subdivision. I went through the planning commission and saw all the citizens get up and plead their case and shocked to see that thing pass. But that traffic is not going to be able to enter 157 and travel back west either. So all the money we got for 157, we should have got a little bit more so we could have had some turnarounds. If you want to go buy a lawnmower at Bash Brothers and you're traveling east, there's no way to get over there. You've got to go up to the red light and dangerously make a U-turn to get back. So maybe we should have asked for a little bit more money to complete that so we'd have a little bit safer areas to turn around and patronize the businesses that are on that road.
Could I give rebuttal?
Yes, sir.
We got the money. The state designed the highway. We didn't design it. They decide where the turn-throughs are, just like the concrete medians on 278. You go down to Gulf Shores, Alabama, they put the same thing right down Beachfront Road. We do not control that. We did not control when the highway would get done, other than we got the $14 million. We were told to get half the money and it would get done. The state built the bridges and left them there.
Thank you, sir, for your response. And that was in, that comes back to our rebuttal rules from the very beginning. So Jason will continue with you regarding transparency and communication. What should the city do to make budgets and contracts more accessible to the public?
Well, I started trying to educate myself on whether I was going to run or not and I decided probably a year ago that I would start attending council meetings. The second one that I attended, I walked in, we said the pledge of allegiance, they passed some resolutions, and I promise you, seven minutes later, I was in my vehicle and was leaving. And after that, I thought, well, I'm not going to learn anything from this. I believe now that I've gotten a little bit more involved in it, we are making decisions in the work-study chat beforehand. I think it would be fantastic if the public, I think, I know we publish the council meetings online, but I've never seen a published time to be at a work session prior to a council's meeting. So I think that would be great. A lot of the doors I've knocked on that people have been encroached on with different projects, they say, we go to the meetings, the deal is already done. So maybe the deal's being done in the work-study program behind. Maybe that would be fantastic for these people to be able to observe that and maybe speak up on some of the situations that go on in there.
Thank you, sir, for your response. And Johnny, same question regarding transparency and communication. What should the city do to make budgets and contracts more accessible to the public?
Well, our city council meetings are open to the public. They are video, live stream. The work sessions are open to the public. The media comes to them. Anybody can come to them. They're one hour before every council meeting. It's, you know, we're not hiding anything. Anybody can come to them. They want a copy of the budget, they can get it. It's public information. All you got to do is go in and make a public information request act.
Thank you, sir, for your, you can ask a question?
Are the work, are they published? Are they out there for the public to see? You just said they're an hour prior. That's the first I've heard of it. Are they published? So the city?
Work sessions.
The work sessions. Are they publicly announced? That's the first I've heard just now that they're an hour prior. Are they announced to the public so the public has notice so they can attend?
I have no idea.
You've been there 17 years. You don't know that?
And you know what? You're not asking the questions either. He is. We announce work sessions.
How?
They're published through the website and we also attend as Coleman.
So you knew that. I wished you would have answered that. I didn't know you knew the answer to that.
Part of being news is showing up to all the meetings.
I'm just trying to learn like all the other citizens.
All right.
Johnny, we'll stay with you regarding diversity of voices.
I'm sorry, diversity of what?
Diversity of voices.
Leases?
Voices.
Voices, okay.
Sorry, I have a little lisp. How will you make sure minority and underserved communities have a voice in city policies?
Well, that's pretty easy. You just go out and talk to them. I've worked this whole city and I've always worked this whole city. I've got friends all over and if they have a concern, they come to me. And I listen to them and I speak on their behalf, on their issue. Now, you can't always solve their issue, but if you cannot go listen to somebody that has an issue, that's your closest friend, and then tell them, yes, you can do that, or no, you can't, and explain why, and still be friends, you don't need to be in this business.
Thank you, sir, for your response. Jason, same question regarding diversity of voices. How will you make sure minority and underserved communities have a voice in city policies?
Well, I'll say this, as far as diversity goes, knocking on the doors that I have the last few weeks, Coleman is very diverse and people are moving here because we are diverse. So hats off to the government for producing that. There's people that said, we were worried about moving to Coleman, but it's been fantastic. The diversity here is off the chain. We don't quite still have that reputation out that we are accepting and diverse of all races and all ethnicities, but we are. We're a great people. We're a great community. And the government's done a fantastic job with that from what I've noticed in the last couple of weeks knocking on doors. People have been very happy to be here, said it's been the best place they've ever lived. And I'm going to some of these new neighborhoods that I'm talking about and these people have only been here a year or two and they're super happy, super happy with us.
Thank you, sir, for your response. And we're going to stay with you for this next question involving council dynamics. City councils often see factions form. How will you work with opponents without creating gridlock?
Repeat it, please. Factions, did you say?
Factions.
Factions, okay, I got you.
Factions form. How will you work with opponents without creating gridlock?
Well, I haven't even thought about creating gridlock. I will say this, that if elected, I'm going to be very careful not to become fascist. It's going on now. The challengers all see it. They completely run as a group and I'm friends with most of them and I've asked some of them, you know, about why it has to be this way. But as far as the gridlock, I don't expect any gridlock, but I do plan on not, we all have our own friends, seemingly, and I don't need to make super friends with my council people. I want to be a great acquaintance of theirs, but I don't have to run a faction.
Thank you, sir, for your response. And Johnny, same question involving council dynamics. City councils often see factions form. How will you work with opponents without creating gridlock?
Well, that's an easy question because the majority rules. And if you get your feelings hurt because you're not, it doesn't go your way, then there again, you don't need to be in this business. I've been the sole man out on two major votes, but the others, one, and that's business. Now, you spend a lot of time with these people, you're going to get very closely acquainted with them, friends with them. And as far as running as a group, we don't run as a group, we run independent. You know, we talk because we have the best interest of the city at heart.
Thank you, sir, for your response. And Johnny, we're going to stay with you on this next question involving public-private partnerships. Do you support using public money to fund or support private developments such as a sports facility or hotels? Why or why not?
Public money in private use is not a good mix. If it's a job-creating situation such as a hotel, there are state incentives and sometimes we'll do in-kind services to make that happen, but they have to meet a quota. And if you don't meet that quota for jobs, then there's a clawback and they have to pay it back.
Thank you, sir, for that response. Jason, same question on public-private partnerships. Do you support using public money to fund or support private developments such as sports facilities or hotels? Why or why not?
Well, other than hotels and sports facilities, we can talk about shopping centers and all that too. I know that it's a necessary thing that has to be done. It's going on with tax abatements. It's part of the process for having businesses move in here, but basically, we're the prettiest girl at the dance, we just don't have any self-confidence. We have five interchanges on I-65. Hansville has one, we have five. But we tend to give the farm away with, and I've heard the stories of this abatement and that abatement, and I believe we can make a better deal. But we're going to continue to do that, to invite businesses in for job growth, but I think we can make a better deal with them.
Thank you, sir, for your response. And we're going to stay with you on this next question regarding motivation and alignment. Candidates often enter the race for different reasons. Was your decision to run a personal calling or did it come about as part of a coordinated push with other candidates?
Well, it so happens that I've been thinking about this for a couple of years and I bank at my opponent's employer and I'd gone by and spoke to him and asked him if maybe one of the three candidates that had been on there at the time, I believe 15 years, may not run, that maybe I had some interest in it. I was concerned with the high-density neighborhoods, that was basically it. We didn't have the conversation about it that day, but that's the reason for me asking. I just wrestled with it for a while. I do run a small business, but the motivation was there because I was seeing the city going in a direction that most were complaining about. After a year or so went by, I was asked by my opponent if I was going to run and who I may run against. And I hadn't made a decision at that time, but I did make a point that people were complaining about the explosion of these neighborhoods and the traffic. And his response was that I was the first person who had mentioned that to him. And at that point in time, I knew I had to give it some serious thinking about running because I felt like, I felt like he might be out of touch a little bit with the citizens. And it concerned me and I decided, really up to the last minute, I was wrestling with if I could pull off both, if I could do my job and this job and with support from my family and prayer, I made the decision that I could do it.
Thank you, sir, for that response. And Johnny, same question regarding motivation and alignment. Candidates often enter the race for different reasons. Was your decision to run a personal calling or did it come as a part of a coordinated push with other candidates?
It's definitely been a personal calling. I am a service-oriented person. I served on many different things. I founded a farm. I served at a church, run a huge mission team to Greece. It's all about community service. And as far as being out of touch with the people, I see people every day and I talk to people, hundreds of people every day. And nobody had mentioned that to me till he mentioned it to me. And that's when we started looking at realigning the growth in the subdivisions.
Thank you, sir, for your response. And Johnny, we're going to stay with you on this next question regarding environment and parks. Coleman takes pride in its green spaces. What is one specific environmental or parks initiative you would champion?
Well, I'm going to say it's going to be the, the oldest park in Coleman is Ark Park. And so I'm very proud that we revitalized that and brought it back. And one of the second oldest, second or third is going to be the Steffemire Park. And just very proud that we redid that. And now we're in the process of Eastside Park, Lions Club Park. And we have revitalized that. and we have revitalized that, bought out a blighted house, and it's going to be something that the citizens of the Eastside will be able to enjoy for years to come.
Thank you, sir, for your response. And Jason, we're going to go to you, same question, environment and parks. Coleman takes pride in its green spaces. What is one specific environmental or parks initiative you would champion?
Well, we all love our parks, and we have several. And once again, I'll give praise where praise is due. I don't know that I could do a better job with the parks than this administration has done. They're professionals. I haven't attended the Eastside, even though I live on the Eastside. I live a block and a half from the Eastside Park. I haven't attended the events because they've been in very capable hands over there on building parks, redoing parks. They're professionals at it. I wouldn't change a thing.
Thank you, sir, for your response, and we're going to stay with you for our final question of the evening. And this is regarding civic responsibility. How do you separate personal business or friendships from official council duties, and can you give an example of when you had to draw that line?
Well, in our business, we're a dealer for several manufacturers, and I'm the owner, so I'm not going to be influenced by it, but I will hardly ever go out with a manufacturer. Very seldom that I'll go and do a fishing trip or something on side like that. I don't have time. I'm a busy person. And as far as my hobbies go, they're already lined up. I won't mix business with pleasure.
Thank you, sir, for your response. And Johnny, we're going to ask you the same question, final question, civic responsibility. How do you separate personal business or friendships from official council duties, and can you give an example of when you had to draw that line?
Well, as I stated before, if you can't go to your neighbor and tell them no and still be friends, but you explain to them, you listen to their concerns, and you explain to them the reasons why, and you can still walk away and be friends, you don't need to be in this business. And I've been able to do that on several occasions, working with some right now, and they may or may not get what they're asking for. We just got to look at it. But, and I've already told them that upfront, you may or may not. But our job is to help them in their problem to resolve it, some shape, form, or fashion.
Thank you, sir, for your response. I would like to thank both Johnny Cook and Jason Willoughby for joining us today, and we're going to go ahead and go into closing statements. Jason, Johnny was afforded the opportunity to go first on opening statements. You're afforded the opportunity to go first on closing statements. You have 90 seconds, sir.
Well, again, I would appreciate your vote on Tuesday. If you want transparency, if you want term limits, if a common sense approach to growth interests you, I'm your guy. If you want a rubber stamp for projects, you don't need to vote for me. I'm not in this for an extra income, a social gathering, or an identity. And I think we, the citizens are on this side, and the government seems to be on this side. I've never seen it more divided. When I hear the calls, I get the calls, I hear the voice, and they say, we don't have a voice. And that's one on my campaign sign. It says, your voice, your town, your voice, your vote. And that started early on. That started before I was knocking on doors, but that's what's really lacking, and I would love to try to mend those relationships and build them stronger. And again, I am a businessman, and not many businesspeople come forward to run. And so if you want a businessperson trying to make better deals for you, I encourage you to give me a shot next Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your final statement. And Johnny, you have 90 seconds for your closing statement, sir.
Well, I stand on my record. I stand on my experience. And my opponent keeps hollering term limits. He's even compared us to the city of Los Angeles. And I don't know about you, but that's one thing I don't want to be compared to. I don't want people living on the streets. I don't want people defecating on the streets, doing drugs on the streets. We've created a nice community that is safe for our families, our grandchildren, and that's the way I want to keep it. I humbly ask for your vote on August 26. Thank you.
Once again, we'd like to thank Coleman City Council Place Three candidates Johnny Cook and Jason Willoughby, both for coming out today and coming up on the stage to debate. I know that's not always the funnest thing to have to do, but we do appreciate your time. We also would like to thank everyone who attended in our crowd and who also attended watching at home. Also, we'd like to give a special thank you to Dr. Ricky Carlowix and Wallace State College for providing such a beautiful auditorium for us to host these debates in. And at this time, we are finished with these debates, and just remember to get out and vote next Tuesday. We'll be back in about 15, 20 minutes with Place Five. Thank you.